Joe, he's ready.
Wait on Paul.
303. 842. 37. 3752. 33. 842. 3752.
52. Is this actually a landline?
It is.
They still exist. I have one at my house, and I even have a rotary dialer.
It's in case of solar flares.
Gotta hold on to those old ways.
New York City, the 9/11 happened, first thing to happen.
Exactly, exactly. That's why we have them, that's why we have a rotary dialer in the closet.
What's in the packet anyways? Ken?
We're here.
Can you hear us, Ken?
We can hear you. We're trying to bring up that PowerPoint onto Paul's machine. I tried sending it, and it hasn't made it over here yet, so we're working it.
Okay.
You want to send it directly to Paul?
What'd you say?
I forwarded... You want to, uh, Arnie just sent a PowerPoint of some sort, so I just forwarded it to Paul, but it hasn't shown up. If you have it right there, can you...
I can see it. I will, I will do that, just one second. Alright, Ken, it's on its way.
Okay.
So, what did we agenda it as, Cara? What's the agenda, Steve?
The agenda is, all it is, is going over this. And honestly, I've, I mean, I'll jump in if someone's talking too much, but I'm kind of seeing this as yours, so... But if I'm like, "Wait a minute," or someone's being ignored, I might jump in, but otherwise...
Yeah, and I think part of it was, the first purpose of the meeting was to try and address Mike's comments that you had from the last meeting, or, you know, the last six weeks or so. Arnie's PowerPoint, we just got a few minutes ago, so I would suggest we do Mike's comments first, Ken, okay?
Yes, that, uh, we were thinking that, and then also, uh, Arnie sent out a summary of important points from the USGS evaluation, which I thought was very good, so we wanted to take a few minutes and go through that, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, sounds good.
Because I bet that's, uh, I think most of those points were very well thought out, and I think we can probably clarify the one or two points that there, that everybody's confused about on that, but that was, whoever did that, it looks like it was the Water Board, maybe?
It was Arnie.
Did a pretty good job.
Yeah, Ken, so this is an official meeting of the Water Board, and, um, Arnie's here, and Kyle Bailey, and Mike Duncan, and Cara, and Denver, and me, and Mark, and Eric, and a member of the public.
And I, I would suggest, just in case this runs really long, if we could do Mike's comments, or Mike's stuff first, and then go over Arnie's points on the USGS report, and then do the PowerPoint, because I have to be somewhere at four.
Yeah.
As long as we get through mine before the day's over.
I, you can do it before the day's over, Arnie, but I wasn't planning on being here till 6 o'clock tonight, and I know how these meetings can go on, so I'd like, I would really like to personally see that, because since I haven't seen your PowerPoint, I don't know how long it is, I don't know anything about it.
Nine slides, eight slides.
Oh, so...
Okay, so, uh, with that in mind, Cara, I think, Ken, are you ready to talk about Mike's comments?
Yeah. Chuck.
Yeah, we still, we come in.
Or when, or Mike can start, how you want to do it, yeah.
Okay, Magal. So, should we consider you the chair, Chuck or Cara, which chair, okay?
Can you feedback a little from the microphone?
Yeah, sure.
Really...
Turned up pretty high.
Because that feedback's killing me. I'll jump in if it feels like someone's not allowing other people to speak, but I don't really see this as a, I'm hoping that this will just be a good, it's a little hard with someone on the phone, but I'm hoping this will just be a good discussion.
Yeah.
So, I'll only jump in if it's like, "Wait a minute, Kyle's had his hand up for half an hour over there."
So, Paul, Ken, thank you guys so much for responding. Let me just ask, rather than, we don't have time to go through a laundry list of questions, so I'm just gonna hit my top, biggest dog, if you will, concern. So, um, just to reestablish that we're all on the same page, your water, preliminary water budget area, you guys drew, uh, the eastern edge of it is well below the, uh, southern, so to speak, of the mountains, the watershed that actually supplies all of our water and so forth. And you picked that area, the boundaries of that area in particular, uh, to take advantage of, uh, non-permeable formations that surround the area, so that almost all of the water budget area is, is a no-flow boundary, and there are only a few places where water comes in and out. So, have I got that much correct?
How do I say? So, huh, having troubles with, with, uh, echoes, um... Basically, basically what we're doing on this side is, is when we speak, we go up to the phone and we're speaking. Can you, can the speaker, I, I heard you, Chuck, can you, can you just put it closer to your, you know? And so we can hear you clearly, and then we'll pull it back, or whatever you said, I'm saying.
Yeah, test, 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 can you hear me any more clearly now? Chuck, if you have anything else, just as I can sit at the table and speak into that mic, that puts me, my pathetic hearing right next to the speaker anyway, you know what?
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting...
Stand by.
By the way, we got the panel in here. So, we got it.
Okay, Ken, Paul, can you hear me now? Is this any better?
Very clear, much better.
Okay, so let me repeat my question, just from the top. You guys picked a, uh, preliminary water budget area, if you will, sometimes I call it a water study area, because I'm confused now with the USGS report, but, anyway, the periphery of that, you guys chose to take advantage of Morrison Formation, or some sort of impermeable formation, that prevents groundwater from going through there, so that most of the area is a no-flow zone, with the exception of just a few handy-dandy points where water comes in or out. Have I got that much right?
Yeah, that does right.
Okay, so, uh, uh, and your main source of water in is Mill Creek, the surface water, which is well-known courtesy of USGS gauge measurements, and you guys made kind of a wild stab at how much groundwater goes in, and, uh, you estimated that, that, as I recall, by picking a, a particular hydraulic conductivity, a particular depth and width, fracture zones and so forth, and voila, a certain number of acre-feet per year comes in at that point. And what I've found is that, what I've found is that when I break things into service and groundwater, and we'll get to that in a moment, I find that too little groundwater comes in versus what comes out. So, it seems to me that one sanity check that you guys might have done, perhaps you didn't do it because you felt like it was out of scope, or you're out of time, or out of money, whatever the reason, I'm not criticizing any of that, we're all in this together, so, uh, so please don't get defensive about it all, but one thing that you could have done, since you already had the tools to evaluate, uh, precipitation within the water study area, is to evaluate the water that's in, that would be in Mill Creek's watershed area, but above the, uh, water budget area. And if you were to compute that, despite all the uncertainties and so forth, uh, it would be a cross-check on whether or not, on how much groundwater is going in underneath Mill Creek. And if you did that, I didn't see it, and, like I say, my main problem with it is by the time I separate out ground and service and groundwater components and so forth, typically, I can't get enough groundwater into the system to match what comes out. And I'm wondering if you're, if you haven't asked, underestimated, uh, how much water is going in on the east side.
Well, it's, uh, I did, in my originally form, uh, we looked carefully at the, at the particular issue, specifically, um, uh, because there is a bit of information on the exchange between groundwater and surface water within the system. If you look at the total water that goes into the combined service and groundwater system, then, uh, we know that, uh, the numbers that we came up with pretty much show a balance, uh, or at least a, uh, reasonable comparison between the numbers, total numbers of inflow and the total numbers of outflow. Because we could not, because of the dynamic situation, and only having glenship numbers for the total time in, uh, in the fall, uh, and most of the exchange between surface water and groundwater takes place in the spring, during the spring runoff, and during the intense rainstorm, uh, we didn't have a handle on that, we didn't want to, uh, to make any, uh, statements on internal exchanges between groundwater and surface water. We looked at it as an integrated system, and looked at the to, to from the outside, and, uh, input from, uh, and output, uh, on the, on, from the system to neighboring systems, uh, and the atmosphere. And in that way, our balance term, as you have noticed, uh, in your comments, is, uh, direct runoff, uh, to stream, which is a part of the input of surface water that, uh, needs to be taken into account when you look at the surface water, groundwater exchanges within the, uh, water budget area. So therefore, we think that, uh, there is no need to, uh, get a huge inflow of groundwater, uh, uh, take from the mountains somewhere, uh, because what, uh, what you might, um, notice as deficits in incoming groundwater, uh, is actually, uh, the change between surface water and groundwater in the system. The surface water in is not just the Mill Creek inflow, uh, at the upper edge of the, the area, but also the direct runoff to streams.
Yeah, well, I understand that you guys had limited data from Blanchard, and the two sets of measurements he made, but he didn't, did he not make those under base flow conditions, and why would those not be, I mean, I, I agree that more, more data, as always, would be a great thing, but it seems to me that that's, as Ken has emphasized over and over again, the, there's a very strong connection between groundwater streams gaining and losing and so forth, in other words, until I looked at the numbers in detail, and actually computed the, the, uh, stream gains down Mill Creek and, and North Fork and so forth. For you to tell me that it doesn't mean anything because, uh, it's a mixed bag, I don't, I don't understand that, Paul, because I, I thought, again, Blanchard was, went out of his way to establish base flow conditions, although certainly one year could not, would not necessarily be represented in a year, still, I maintain it's a lot better than nothing. And if you include that sort of stream gaming and so forth, then that, uh, me, that seemed to be more accurate than just trying to mix it all. Paul, I gotta say, too, for you to say it's a holistic technique by adding together, uh, trying to balance the sum of the two, is, is rather like, and forgive me if I'm all red, tell me, and I won't feel badly if you tell me this, it's rather like trying to estimate the, trying to say the population of the United States is fixed over the years, but gee, the number of Hispanics are growing, and the number of whites is shrinking, you know, and, and without the absence of any population data on those two species, you're gonna try to balance the two of them, and say something about those individual gains. I mean, um, you're, you're, by not breaking that out of the service and groundwater components, with a pretty decent explanation, you know, understanding how water is transferred back, and with Blanchard's supporting data from at least one year, it seems to me that if you're just throwing away perfectly good data, not taking advantage of the fact that surface water has to balance, year in and year out, okay, I mean, averaged over years. And by not taking advantage of the fact that I, at the moment, don't have a lot of confidence in your overall water levels, yes, so if you can help, um, between my fears there, that would be great.
And before you answer, Ken or Paul, I think Arnie has something he wants to say.
That's okay, let's, let's go ahead and let them answer, and then I'll say something.
So, your turn. Go for it.
Mayor, may I, uh, answer, uh, Mike's, uh, phone?
Yes.
Please.
Uh, well, the first place, uh, the base flow, um, as we, uh, refer to, uh, that was, uh, the focus of, uh, the measurements by Blanchard, uh, basically, base flow is an indicator in hydrology for the, uh, groundwater contribution, uh, to the surface runoff. In a straightforward system where basically there is a continuous, uh, uh, flow from groundwater to surface water. And in our case, uh, the, in the fall, it's pretty much the case, the case that many of the stretches, uh, of stream are gaining streams, and some are losing, but the gaining stream is in the fall, it is, uh, low flow conditions, uh, from the mountains, and so groundwater contribution is an important and rather continuous part of it. In the spring, the situation is significantly different. In the spring is when, uh, the surface water, uh, flows are much higher, uh, and there's, um, um, it's a significant bit more water available to go the other way, back to the groundwater. And because we don't have any glenship-like, uh, uh, numbers, uh, measurements, uh, to look at that particular part of the time of the year, um, we did not want to focus just on Blanchard, because we thought that would not be accurate, and it would, uh, paint, uh, the name of the actual picture. The other ten, the other part of the, uh, question is, how much water is in the system? And we feel very confident that the total amounts that we have, uh, come up with are a pretty good indicator for the city, uh, to use for the water management. Of course, from a scientific point of view, we can do much more to be more accurate and understand better the exchanges over the year, over the seasons, uh, between surface water and groundwater, but for the, uh, the, the goal, uh, that we had for this particular study, it, uh, we did not think that would be, uh, uh, major, uh, part of our study. Uh, and, and part of, uh, the answer is because we need more field data, and we would prefer to have, have such an analysis, after we carefully set up measurement program, uh, which we, to our surprise, didn't find in the USGS, uh...
Thank you, Paul. Uh, I'm gonna have Arnie come up to your best mic here.
Paul, Ken, how are you today?
Paul, Ken, how are you today?
Yeah, yeah.
So, when you developed a numerical model, and it's a static model at this point in time, um, most people that develop a model like this for groundwater resources that include surface water, use some sort of, um, groundwater slash surface water model, and run it through iterations forwards and backwards, to see if it comes up with reasonable numbers in terms of time. Have you done any of that whatsoever?
Well, you know, one of the things is, uh, in, in the system, in the surface water, it's typically a very fast-moving system, but, uh, when you model it, uh, it would be on a very short term, uh, groundwater responses are much smaller, and therefore has another timeframe, uh, for the, for the modeling. In our case, uh, basically, as I indicated in my response to, to Mike, uh, one of the problems is that we, uh, uh, only have, uh, on the inflow and outflow side of Mill Creek, we have, uh, data that we can look at, uh, from a seasonal point of view, uh, uh, we do not have a glenship type of study for, uh, uh, spring conditions specifically. So, uh, because of the lack of that, we have not, uh, been able, and again, in the light of the past, that we had to provide an overall idea of how much water is available, we did not have the resources at the time, and, uh, and, and, uh, money to, uh, go in a much more scientific detail. We would love to do that, but we haven't been able to do that within, uh, timeframe and, uh, resources we have.
So, there's been no attempt to validate this model with actual modeling?
So, actually, in 1991, we did do a model, uh, believe it or not, and that's never been brought up by anybody, um, but we actually got a graduate student over here, much like USGS has five graduate students, and we went ahead and, and actually, we have a published, not published, we have a piece, lots of model of that entire area, where we actually included it with the rest of the Spanish Valley. And those days, we used Blanchard's conceptual model, which was they were directly connected, and the flow just went through the rock, so there's fractures, anything like that, and we actually did do a steady-state model, which was prepared to go forward, forward into a transient model, so yes, we've actually done something like that, way ahead of this, in 1991. Um, the catch with that, though, is you can calibrate anything, so, yes, I mean, you gotta know that about models, which is why they don't all operate well in parts, is because in order to get through the modeling exercise, there's a lot of, there's some things you can do to make it work. But the interesting is, yes, we actually have tried to do that, and we created the whole system as a matrix system, because basically that's how it's thought of back in Blanchard times. So, that was the 1991 conceptual model we had, the model you're seeing today, but a little different conceptual model, because we've begun to realize compliments of the other studies, like the 2007 study, of flow and others, um, with some of the chemistry they had, that gave it away, that there were other things going on, and so therefore, um, as the chemistry data became available, including the latest study, um, it's fine to use the conceptual model, but makes you realize that a matrix model does not work. If you're gonna do a, well, you can make anything work, but it's not really practical, because it's not really telling you what you want to do. Now, this is fairly state, however, so that wasn't a change, change in time, that was a snapshot at night, so again, that doesn't have changes over time in, in terms of a mathematical model.
I have a second question. Um, at this point in time, the current conceptual model you have, what I've understood out of that, has not been tested through any modeling device, other than your simple mathematics, um, associated with making it balanced for one year. And my second question is, is that, it says on here, we asked for a peer review of this document six, eight months ago, at this point in time, and I was assuming that we wouldn't, the city wouldn't accept this as a final form until they got a peer review of it, and it says that it's final on here at this point in time. What is the status of the peer review on this document?
I can tell you that. Ken, let me answer that question. I thought as a courtesy to let the Water Board do some reviewing first, which you guys have been doing, and once we shake out your comments, then it'll go back to the UGS.
Well, they're a lot more, although I'm currently becoming a hydrogeologist, if you so will.
They what?
They're, they're much more expertise at this than we are, and they're the ones that would actually be the scientists that would review this.
I know they are.
So, I, I would, I would appreciate if we considered this document draft until it was actually peer reviewed, because I think there's some serious problems, which I'm going to talk about here in a little, in terms of the comment in a moment, about the conceptual model. The conceptual model, what you're looking at right now, does work for a certain area of our system, but it's not representative of Glen Canyon groupography, and that's all I have to ask of Ken and the rest of you.
So, we're gonna talk about that?
Whatever you guys have, whatever you want to talk about, I'm laughing.
Well, is that, I have no, I haven't seen your PowerPoint, Arnie, I'm, I'm flying totally blind here, so is that what's in your PowerPoint?
It's the same...
I think Mike wants to talk.
Yeah, let Mike talk.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the whole thing, but go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, got it. Okay, so Ken, Paul, I'm back, Mike here. Uh, so let me, uh, address another point on your letter about, um, um, Grand County wells, and San Juan County wells, and you guys did not include them in your, uh, out-water budget, and I know it sucked a lot of water out of there. And then you went on to explain the reason that you did so was because you believe that that water is not being charged out Glen Canyon, Aucphor, rather is being charged, um, by an artificial recharge, recharge source leakage from Ken's Lake. And we've been talking about that subject off and on for quite some time now, and usually when I peep, ask, it might have been you guys, and it might have been other hydrologists as well, and I don't, there are no other hydrologists, really, uh, I usually get the answer, uh, those wells are being recharged in part, nobody really knows, I don't think, but that's typically the answer I got, that they're not entirely, um, being charged by just, just leaked, by, by Ken's Lake. And you guys drew a nifty picture in your report that showed a, uh, one of the figures, that shows a nifty, uh, fracture line that extends all the way along the eastern edge of the valley, runs from the southeast to the northwest trending line, goes all the way past the golf course, all the way to the river, all the way up to, um, Scotts Springs, Skakel Springs?
Skakel.
Skakel, I'll get that right someday. And that fault, particularly south of the golf course, and around, in the area of Johnson's up on top, looked like to me an ideal conduit, okay, for water that would flow out of Ken's Lake if it were leaking. And by the way, they showed some figures, uh, a couple of months ago, at one of their meetings, last year when the water was low, they leaked a lot of water, like 700 acre-feet leaked out of that lake, at a time of low flow, so there is a lot of water coming out of the lake. But what I'm trying to say is, it seemed to me that fracture could very well carry that same leakage of water on farther to the northwest, where it might be recharging other wells as, as well, so I'd like you to defend the statement that, or your, defend your decision not to say it had any water out of Glen Canyon, Aucphor at all. I would expect you to put something in there that would be more realistic than none at all.
I, I have a second question to follow up with that. Did you guys look at the isotope, Ken, hold on a second? I'll, I'll speak into that microphone there.
Ken, I have, I have a second question to ask on that. One of the wells, the Chaplin well, was sampled by the USGS, I believe. Did you guys actually look at that data and see whether the isotope data lined up with more of the valley fill, and younger water data that would be in Ken's Lake, or whether it lined up with the Glen Canyon groupography of the water?
So, um, we'll put the two together. If you can help me answer the first question. First of all, if you go back to 2007, and look at the low rate part, and you look at where their chemistry is, it shows exactly, as quickly as it could, the edge of that fracture zone, and goes all the way to Ken's Lake down to the Chaplin well. So, that was our first clue, actually, that we had something that was going on over there, and yes, the, it was Glen Canyon, well, you're calling Glen Canyon, because the calcium bicarbonate water that basically more reflected the bedrock system rather than the ground. And actually, there's a plume that goes all the way, not our plume, it's their plume, and it goes all the way from Ken's Lake straight down to the Chaplin well. And yes, that fracture keeps going down below, but it doesn't hit our wells, meaning the city, it's actually further out, down in the valley, rather than the edge of the bedrock there. So, that was our clue, that something else was going on there, besides, uh, the original thought that everything comes streaming under Johnson's up on top. The trouble with that, of course, is there's no structure, and there's no clue that anything like that happens, including wells or anything else, so that remains a great mystery. But anyhow, uh, the Chaplin well went in, and we looked at the drawdown on it, and within a matter of, I forget, hours or minutes, they hit the fracture zone, and suddenly they have equilibrium in their Aucphor. and suddenly they have equilibrium in their Ockford test that they shut it down, which meant they hit the fracture zone. And basically, they put their straw into the, into the fracture zone. And you can go look at their Ockford test and you'll see it, it's right there. And so that's where, uh, numbers like fifty feet per day or whatever came out of that. Um, and so basically, they were tied into that system. And they knew that, it's why they put the well over there. Um, the original EPA well protection zone actually had an overlay for the Mill Creek, uh, like ours did, and ours do go across the Mill Creek, uh, ours being the city. But basically, uh, we don't think the Chapman well does that. We think it's one straight up fracture zone, which is no surprise. Um, the San Juan County also heard our talk, went in, put their wells in, and found the fracture zone, and they were getting quite a good yield right off the bat. You know, as soon as they got down to their, their dirt, went down below the hill, they had a boundary condition, we call it boundary condition, a fracture zone in this state, uh, stream. So, and it didn't take, you can do whatever formula you want, but if you look at fifty feet per day, it's a big, a big, uh, number. Um, they hit the fracture zone instantaneously and draw down and hurt right away. So it's no surprise there's a fracture zone there anymore. We've got at least two wells, and if we look at some of the others, I bet it might as well. Um, some of the other lowly wells are shallow and very depth, so we'd have to look at them to see how they differ. And this is part of, of course, Phase Four. And we would tie in that whole system together because Spanish Valley is just not a valley for gravel. And that is probably four or five little subsystems went on it. And they're all very critical to how the water quality and the water quality will go. One of the subsystems is this fracture zone. By the way, equipment went on the west side of the valley, and it comes down to those springs. And that's another story, a very similar example, another story. So that's the real fracture zone. Is it giving some recharge, uh, up on top, probably a little? Um, basically, if you, I'm sure you both like them down up on top. You have glacial grapples and fans which are sitting basically on a schwa in some part. And it's fracturing probably still in the, and the lower end is sitting on now, and they're both there. If you are a drop of water and you can come to gravel, how much of it is gonna go in? How much is gonna go to the plenty of the sea side? I think you're gonna find given the gaseous fractures and everything else, the water's gonna divide up and it's not gonna be a whole lot of recharge in there, but a little to be playing here at the top of Johnson's up on top, which is important for your future plans. There's probably a mini little groundwater to buy underneath there. A little bit of that water is flowing down to the west, the rest of it is flowing to the east. And so that's the Johnson's up on top story which shows up in our first section. By the way, if you look at the cross section in the USGS report, they really did do a whole lot of detail at all. Um, so that's, I'm not complaining about it, it's just that don't rely on those, they're not the story. Our list will be dramatic too, but if you want the real ones, go back to Low and others. There's plenty of cross sections in the cross valley, and those are getting also. The summer may come, wells may help, uh, come down under the bottom. So that's the story of the Chapman well in that area right there. Now, a little bit further down, um, we still have some questions that she was coming out there. And that would be, uh, for some property, whatever that is, further up down. Um, she may be part of that fracture zone coming on across, so that's, that's a wonder for being there. Uh, but for the most part, the majority of those wells in county, this is why they've had troubles over the years, right? They run out a couple of times. They had a contract with the city for water, my right hand. And so if they run out, if those wells have run out, they have a contract with the city for water, they're not tied into Mill Creek, okay? They're tied to something else, which is going up, probably up and down valley. Whether you wanna believe that or not is up to you. But that needs to be, a doctor, that needs to be proven, but that takes money at times. So if you wanna do that, go for it. But that's our best guess is right now, we've got a thick line in a form of a well-known fracture zone that's actually in there, that goes from Ken's Lake all the way down to about half, and then it keeps going. The same fracture zone, the different thing, when it gets below the city well, the fracture zone becomes a barrier, and that's why the city springs are there. And then if we come down a little further beyond that, it suddenly becomes transmissive again, and that's why we have gaseous. So that same fracture zone, we have several different, uh, several different types of flow path depending upon the geometry of what's around it. And that's why you need us looking at it. We're trying to figure out what those geometries are.
And so what, so what I think that you told me was that recharge from Ken's Lake, while it appears to be recharging Chaplin, it's blocked when it goes further to the northwest and you don't think it's recharging any of the city's wells. Is that correct?
Uh, I don't think, yeah, which happens on, I don't think it reached, is anything to do with our, our structure, okay? Um, the city also has the well go out there, doesn't it, somewhere in the valley? And that's, that's, that's the reason why Phase Four is, that well probably needs to be protected too. But I need your help on this one, Chuck, maybe where that well is, but it's, it's more in the valley. It's not up there on the bedrock, correct?
Corbin, Corbin well is near Chaplin, just kinda north of it.
He's talking about a well called Corbin. If you didn't hear him, that was Eric.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't been asked to do that yet, that well, unless we're doing Phase Four. At least that well gets included and we attach the two systems together. We attach the, uh, actric system, let's speak, and with the Mill Creek system, so to speak. So that's the, that's what the next phase is all about, and that's what we're supposed to get done in the next two to three weeks.
So let me ask you one, a follow-up question, my original line of inquiry, then I think I'm done with you guys. Um, you've heard me say a nice sanity check would have been to estimate with, uh, the same tools, I think the USGSU, as they call it, forgive me now, because I can't remember the acronym that described the methodology, but basically it takes, it models snow and rain precip versus soil surface types, fraction matrix formations versus da-da-da-da. Much like you guys split it up into your, uh, little subzones and so forth. But could you guys, two questions, I guess. First of all, could you use that to estimate how much water would be coming down from the top of La Salle Mounds into the Mill Creek drainage and would presumably appear as either surface or groundwater going in to that spot? As a double check on, on the value that you've so far, uh, picked out of the, more or less out of the blue. I heard you say some, you know, you have some scientific justification. But I guess what I'm trying to say is to make it clearer, I'm not very clear. If you did a precipitation recharge estimate of the watershed above the eastern boundary of your water study area, would that serve as a useful estimate of what the groundwater recharge underneath Mill Creek would be?
Let's, let's, let's look at it a little differently for a moment. Um, let's pretend we're a drop of water, okay? And let's go ahead and let's fall on top of, uh, the first ones and the couple of sound up, all right? Let's say we do it on, uh, call it a piece or one of those that's out here. Do you average that of any water that flows in that fractured rock? If we're lucky, because it doesn't have a fracture zone that we have down here, uh, where the paradox is going to stay, all right? Most of that water maybe gets as deep as five hundred feet into that rock, otherwise it's less. Very much no major, totally fractured, so it goes down. So you can draw kind of a two hundred to five hundred foot, uh, line underneath the landscape up there. Can't actually pick a, pick a paper, I pick a distribution. That water cannot go deeper than that because of the static pressure, that's just the way it is. And so you can't get a pipe flowing down. So most of that water then flows down to the edge of where it is and it hits the glacial grapples. At which point, it has two different ways it can go. It can either hit the glacial grapples, they go into the nearby streams. And you have different age of those streams that my guide or paths and so forth is on. Or it, uh, or, and it can become spring right around the base of the south and goes into, uh, the stream that way, right? So there's your first round of high altitude water. It's not going any deeper than that, still at the five hundred feet in those fracture drifts, it can't. And then all of a sudden, they go into like that. That's why you have, uh, you have a, a series, a few springs, but a lot of springs start to flow up there, okay? So that's coming down there. The stuff that stays from the glacial grapples is stayed with it until it hits a unit. And usually somewhere around the Dakota, somewhere in there, you see a few streams daylighting there. Then the glacial water getting the shales that are around the Dakota may go actually to what it's on. So there's no way water goes down there, and that's still high altitude water. So all the rain that falls on your apps and forests and all that is high altitude water. And it's going to your glacial grapples, and you get a few springs around the Dakota. And that just shows us there, but for the most part, that's it. Then the next round down is the Morrison, all right? And the Morrison, you don't see it because there's all these fans, we call them Wilson Mesa and Keith, and, uh, South Mesa, okay? So that fan then becomes the next aquifer. And remember now, any water that falls on that's gonna have a high altitude signature, right? And it's gonna go into there and it's gonna work its way on down into, uh, into the base of that and it hits the Morrison. And there's a few aquifers, a few old fans in the Morrison, but they're not regional, they're not big. Again, you notice I'm not putting a pipeline from the dirty extrusions into any of those systems. I'm moving it all on the surface. And you notice it's all high altitude water. So we get to the edge of the, of the basis and there now, with the advanced irrigation and everything they're doing up there, we now have, uh, all sorts of seats that are showing up in places because it's, again, new local gravel which are sitting next to the Morrison, all right? So they come out that way. That's the majority of those go up the evacuation. Some of it will trickle in somewhere, but most of it doesn't really come down as a big stream. Finally, uh, some of that does get into the entrata that's fractured. And then it'll show up, and finally, the first springs you see really of any great consequence are sitting down either somewhere in the entrata or way down into the meadow, okay? All of that is high altitude water, but all of that is pretty much daylighting on the surface. And so we put a whole lot of D wells down there to confirm your big belief that there's a tremendous amount of gravel coming in from there. There just isn't, there's no spraying seats, none of that's in there. However, to compensate for your concern that there's a lot of high altitude water coming in there, we basically have, uh, an ample stretch all the way from, I forget the name of the drainage yard over there, this one of the river drainages, from there all the way around there. We have as high cave of their high fracture gradations. And so we're accepting a higher amount of recharge in there than would normally be out of street precipitation to try and compensate for what you're calling is the water coming out of the mason. So we're not ignoring your concern. It just has a very, very interesting pathway on how it might get there. But again, the recharge going in and out there is now, is a high elevation moving to middle elevation, right? We're getting a bunch of mixed water in there. As opposed to Mill Creek, which is picking up a whole lot of high elevation water and everything all the way around it. And the Mill Creek crack is the ground water conduit, so it's moving in that way too. So the most direct pipeline from what's coming out of the very tops of the mountains and all the gravel, all the glacial stuff and all that, is really funneling into Mill Creek, which is actually what we need to protect if you really want the story. That's what we really need to protect is everything that's coming in there and all the activities that are up there, the surface water and groundwater, uh, systems that are up there because they will affect everything coming down into Mill Creek. And I think, Arnie, that was your concern, is we didn't say strongly enough. But we do need to really protect everything above in Mill Creek, both the surface water and all the groundwater systems that feed into it. Uh, particularly if you're gonna have deforestation and you put a lot of, you know, chemical, right? That kind of stuff, all that stuff that's gonna come on down and feed into our systems all over the park here. So that's how we handle the, the masons daylighting out on the Morrison and then the excess water there. We actually have a higher amount of recharge, and it's a higher elevation, so there's a higher amount of recharge anyway. That's going into there by what, maybe half an inch here or something like that. So that, that all gets in there as groundwater in, and it doesn't show until further down in Riddle or further down in Mill or further down in the North Fork where it starts daylighting out. What is confusing, however, is Riddle and North Fork and Mill are pretty standard hydrologic systems. Water moves to the fractures, and then when it gets even up and intersects the water table, they start to flow. And they go in and out, but they mostly tell a tale, mostly that's, that's gravel coming out there. Mill has a different story because, because it has different depths and the fracture zone is, is very, very different there. And it would take a whole lot of data to figure out what's going on there, except for we have two wells. And so we know one is two hundred feet deep and one is five hundred feet deep, and they're both pumping water. So that's why we have those numbers, two hundred and five hundred in the tables. They have a basis. We don't have any wells in the other valley, they're more than a valley. Does that help a little?
Uh, yes, it helps. Uh, although I don't wanna take too much time, I know other people got questions. I guess, Ken, Paul, the reason I'm concerned, I guess I'll put it that way is, is, is the USGS report said unequivocally, and Arnie and Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, they said over and over again, there's not much recharge going on down low in the valley, below nine thousand feet, below seven thousand feet, basically where your, where your water budget area is. They said all the recharge is happening higher up in the mountains, which is to say on the east side, up slope of where your water study area is. And, and that's where they ran their recharge precipitation snow melt models and so forth. And you've concentrated on lower parts of it for that recharge phenomenon, which they simply said was essentially negligible. This is not adding up in my mind. Why, I mean, they're focusing on water appearing high on the slopes. You just told me, yeah, there's some, but it sticks close to the surface and, uh, basically disappears. And forgive me, guys, because this is the part I'm the weakest on, you know, all the very, I'm not a geologist and all the different layers is gonna take some practice. And you guys have that expertise and I don't. But I'm just trying to resolve that disconnect between the USGS's focus on precip in the high areas above seven and down nine thousand feet and your focus in the lower areas. So a couple more minutes on that and then, and then I think we'll call it a day from my point of view, anyway.
So here, here's the way to look at that, and I have to go back and look at what their models are. But what you have to do is their model is basically elevation based. And they say, they use the words soil. Uh, and I, we have to see the other parameters that are in there. But basically, when we first looked at it, it was kind of like, they're looking at generalized parameters of something like, this is not a like system. This is a system that's complexity all the way from top to bottom. Um, and so just to call something based on elevation or something based on what you expect to see for soil or something like that is not what we would say as meticulous as what we're trying to do here. So what we're doing is we're writing up everything into little substance. Yes, we do use the elevation factor for precipitation. And we do distribute it in fact. It's what happens in precipitation as it goes. Where in their particular case, given a couple of parameters, they just say, well, we have this, this recharge, and they go from there. So there's this more of a general regional kind of blanking concept of what's going on. And we're sitting here actually giving you, or basically little data, so to speak, in incredibly detailed accounting of what's going on each of the pieces. So it's, it's a whole different philosophy and approach. Kind of the trying to break out what the rock are actually doing. Theirs is basically looks at it and says, well, we have elevation soils, slopes. Here's what we expect the recharge to be, we're like, there's more to the story than that. So we actually took it more on the soft surface of what's going on and whatever. They're looking more at the surface, give it a better remodeling approach or whatever. It's a bad area to start out with, you know? If we were to start out with something, we might start with something like that. And they were trying to make it into a research project to see if they could make it work, and that's why. But we actually, on this system, decided to go into more detail, whether or not it's right or not. And we have to put a whole lot more data out there, because neither of them are going back to the message really what's coming on. Curious to see if there's a whole lot of difference. But we can tell you that when they say no recharge on sandstone, we have just finished a legal bridge for the best friend down in Connect. They have the same elevations, they're dealing with five thousand to six thousand feet. They have sand dunes, we have sand and some sand dunes, but we don't have quite the thick sand dunes. The amount of recharge that's going into their systems at that elevation from the same boundary precipitation is two to three inches higher than within the surrounding country side. We know that sand on sandstone is definitely, and if you don't like this, go back and look at precip work nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety-two, and nineteen ninety-three. And you will find that he has, he has six to eight is a nice one for matrix, but if you start putting in frac- But if you start putting in fractures, you're going to be higher than that. But we're finding that these percentages are considerably higher in order to make water balance work. Otherwise, you know, you can't get an after you can blow. You've got to have a recharge function and everybody there seems to know it. Whereas everybody up here seems to think it's magic. Uh, we also know that no matter how little our out dry, well, it's being below. When you get to the upper end of the valley, we're going to be dealing with this for the pack creek system. When you get to the upper valley, the precipitation is not only slightly higher, but you still have coarser ground holes, right? But and you've got ground holes and it's going to be accepting water in. And they claim there's no EHO recharge in the upper end of the valley and I cannot see that. Um, basically if you have a bunch of blood coming down off the side, uh, anywhere on the west side and it comes down to the drainages, it is a little bit of just runoff. There's a certain amount there that's going to go in because you've got fracture rock and you've got ground holes. And it's going to take something in. And if you look at the water quality, probably if you get over on the edges, you'll probably see going from rainwater to jump. I mean, it's really amazing how fast the rainwater picks up the chemistry in top. And I know you know that already. And so basically, uh, when you start seeing these kinds of, uh, of numbers going up in terms of TDS and everything else, you know that focus recharge is going in on the drainages during either, not so much in this case, snow melt, but on, on events, another thing. It doesn't just all run off. A fair amount of it goes right in and that's the enhanced recharge we get. These are extraordinary systems. You can go into other systems, uh, sandstone and sand and you can come up with other numbers very easily. They don't have this kind of structure on it. They don't have this kind of dynamics on it. It's a very, very unique system anywhere in the world and that's what makes it difficult. So, uh, sand on sandstone is a good magnet. The problem is that sand on sandstone that is fractured, as they showed up with some of their wells, they said weren't good. Uh, but they actually were good for us. You know, we, the four wells under there, failure wells or whatever they call it, we liked them, you know? Because they had some in the matrix and they showed the matrix part. Those are, it's tough to get it to move. If you have any kind of seismic formity or any kind of haphazardity, it'll take a lateral leap. So the matrix is a real lucky ball game. You're going to get all sorts of different ages of water on that depending on where you are in the matrix. So if you get on the fractures, it's going to be lateral water. It's going to be water that's streaming through there and I'm going to like tritium. Everything is just going to come streaming right on through there. It's a very rapid system. So it's a very difficult system to predict. And we think their data is fantastic because as we look at it, we can make it fit our concept of life. It's not a problem. That's why I say we're not at all in harmony with the USGS data. And for both of the results, and it turns out they have taken my comments to some degree. I was right up there and I said, grand staff is a zone system. They got it now as a zone system and they are correct. And their data show it, it is. And they showed that the funky spring that nobody can explain actually is local water and not coming from the south mountain. No surprise to us. This is what we expected on that, okay? So basically, uh, within the first draft, all the way into the blower draft, they come around and they submit a notice. Take a look at their plate number three and they now don't want to take a stand on connecting the, uh, Glen Canyon system with, directly with the, uh, the factory building. Take a look at their retention metric surfaces. They don't take a stand. They now break it. And if you go over to plate three, you look at it and they're smart to do that. That, that now plate three is acceptable. It's actually the way it should be. And the most important part of plate three for you, uh, on phase four, if we ever get there, um, is the second little platelet, platelet feeling that the blood is just, anyway, the second little platelet up on the right hand corner. That's related to geophysics to get the cross sectional area to tell you what your output is in that bottom part of the system. That makes their numbers now there very believable, okay? So their plate three has gone a long way. It's, it's a, if it played down, then I think it's usable. When I first saw it, it didn't look like that. I made comments all over the place. So Arnie, I have a little volume to take there, but their plate three has come all the way around and so close to what we have. It's amazing. Um, and
I got it.
What?
It's right there. I see three different sort of, um, flow paths here. One is the pack creek, one is the Glen Canyon group, and then one would be the Mill Creek. Both north and south fork coming together there. So there's actually
Hang on a minute.
So anyways, I, we are looking at it, Ken. That's fine. They took your comments. That's great. Are you done, Mike?
I, I am done. Ken, Paul, thank you guys so much for your, for your help. I appreciate it. We'll be in touch.
We're not done with the phone call yet because Arnie, we need to shift on to Arnie's
Standby, gentlemen.
So let's just go, because
I next on the agenda this morning.
I don't care.
So I stated this at the beginning of this discussion.
I need to come to that.
We can move the full of the party.
Oh, I can come over there. I'm totally unwired. Not as well. So Ken, when we started this discussion, you came up with your conceptual model and said that there was water in Mill Creek was directly recharging the Glen Canyon group at the lower end below seven thousand feet. I told you that I disagreed with you unequivocally. And you said I said, the reason why is because the isotopes that were associated with the Glen Canyon group were different than those in Mill Creek. At that time, you said, well, it's a draft report and I'll wait till it comes out final. It has come out final. There are half a, well, there's at least four statements in there that insist that the water in the Glen Canyon group is different from the water in Mill Creek where you say it's being recharged. Most of the conceptual, well, let's just go to your conceptual model, the difference between the two conceptual models, if you don't mind. This is your conceptual model, which has the recharge area being below seven thousand feet there and then both the Mill Creek in the north and the main fork in the north fork. The, I'm just going to, I'm just going to keep this as it is, you guys. The conceptual model the USGS is now showing with Gardner and Etal shows that you have a shallow Glen Canyon group aquifer, which you have modeled. And then you have another deep Glen Canyon group aquifer and a valley fill aquifer. Those are the three major flow paths I see in plate three that you were just discussing. Um, the reason why they, they, they recharge, oh, by the way, I went to Kip Solomon's presentation on Sunday a week ago. Um, and he has used a different model to find recharge for that area. And it's called, oh my gosh, a lumped parameter model. And he calculated the recharge being at three thousand three hundred acre feet per year for the Glen Canyon group, which is pretty darn close to the discharge from the USGS efforts, which is where they measure discharge at thirty-three thousand six hundred acre feet. I haven't been able to get a copy of conceptual model, but it's very similar, except he has elucidated the actual area that the recharge comes and he won't give it to me until the paper is peer reviewed. Um, and which is why I'm still wondering why we're final. Anyway, support for the USG models comes from the isotope samples. This oxygen eighteen and deuterium graphs show a clear separation of Mill Creek water from upper Glen Canyon group water. The seasonal samples of the same isotopes also show no overlap between them. The age isotopes analyzing multiple isotopes show a similar pattern. The altitude temperature isotopes are actually noble gases and show the same pattern, not necessarily isotopes. Um, if we look at that graph, we do see the Glen Canyon group down there at the bottom. Yeah, I'm hoping you're to, you know, slide number seven at this point in time. Sample fourteen and fifteen are taken from wells that are high in the La Salle's. Obviously, the water that's in those higher wells came from higher altitude because it didn't come uphill. And what they're saying is that the signature with the deuterium in isotopes saying that the Glen Canyon group aquifer came from a similar elevation. And they did work seasonally on this too. And if you look at their seasonal graphs, the blue is where the Glen Canyon group is. There are no samples, they didn't put any in there, but they took seasonal samples from the other water sources. And the Mill Creek, I believe, is in blue at this point in time, Mill Creek itself. And it never actually has the same isotope signature as the Glen Canyon group water that the city replied, we, um, relies upon. And Ken, I am sorry, but your model does not adequately hold up to this isotope work. And I, when I stated to you that I was going to have problems with this later on down the road, you said, fine, if we're wrong, we'll change the model. I'm wondering when you're going to do that.
No, I didn't say that. What I said is, you're looking at the O eighteen and deuterium graph, right?
I am.
You see how, I can't see here. I have to buy my, no, I went through this because basically the whole thing is gradational as you work your way on down. And it, it slowly, it gets down to, let's see. I, no, I actually have reviewed this figure. And I actually showed how basically if a mixing model as you're coming down Mill Creek, if you start looking at from the top and working your way down to the bottom, you can see the trend as it's working its way down the grass to where it is, um, in terms of mixing. And this actually fits. So I, in the interest of time, let's see, I don't know where it is in here. I've actually reviewed this graph and I liked it. It actually works and
Talking slide seven.
Yeah, I actually go to figure ten and figure eleven, but more figure tens, I guess. You start taking a look at where they applied that and I like that they did there too. Um.
I think Ken's looking at the report, Arnie's looking at the PowerPoint. I'm not sure.
So the figure ten is down here at the bottom.
Yeah, I see that.
I got the figure.
I can't. Can you put it on slideshow instead of
I can, I can do whatever you like.
Page ninety, the one I was really trying to find in the report.
Yeah.
Might have to record it.
Page thirty-five.
Because that's the figure I really wanted is that it actually says one, um, and I like it. I've gone down on it. And I can do the mixing with it and I can guess what's going on in our system with it. But I have to take out the glasses or something so I can see it. Uh. Who's on pitch, page thirty-five? Page thirty-five, that's thirty, two, three, thirty-nine, thirty-eight. Page ten. Figure, there it is now. So it's figure thirty, if page thirty-one. Page thirty-one is the figure.
Thirty-five, but anyways. Thirty-five.
Yeah, I know. I see that.
You see that?
I see that.
And so the, the critical thing to see here is the connection between the Mill Creek surface water, which are the pluses and the overlap with the Glen Canyon group groundwater. Now, the, you see that?
This one. So the two X's on the very bottom are sample fourteen and fifteen, and those are from high altitude wells.
That's fine. It doesn't make them the same. Um, it's, it's just another population. I'm looking at the changing population as you're coming down through Mill Creek, which are the pluses. And all of a sudden, you're, you suddenly have the crossover of the pluses with the blue surface, okay? And you need to go and see where those are actually on. This is a plant, you need to see where they actually are spatially. And I believe I went back and looked at this and they overlap right when we're trying to recharge our system. You see what I mean? The, 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 the no paint surface water is starting to pick up. And that's the purpose of that plus. If you look at that plus in those circles right there, you're seeing that the populations are starting to overlap. And that's where the mixing zones would be, I think, okay? The groundwater and the surface water are basically the same. And if we did a more interesting study on that, we, now that we know what we're looking for, I bet you are going to see that we have mixing waters are coming through it because that's the losing part of Mill Creek for those samples were taken, right? And so therefore we're taking the altitude water and we're feeding it into the groundwater. That's what we're doing.
I would, I would, I would argue at this point in time that they don't actually overlap. Your delta D, your delta eighteen is close, but it doesn't overlap. And your delta D does not overlap, Ken. And so what I'm saying is that I do not think your conceptual Ken, just let me finish. I do not think your conceptual model is adequate. And I would like the document peer reviewed before we even bother to have this discussion on this conceptual model that I think is inaccurate. However, I would like to say that your conceptual model will be useful when we go to look at the shallow groundwater, shallow Glen Canyon group, which the, if you looked at slide number three of mine, um, the USGS has identified. So your model will do a great job at this point in time of modeling Mill Creek and the water budget for Mill Creek in terms of the groundwater in Mill Creek and the surface water if it comes to fruition and with tweaks. But as far as I'm concerned, your model does not model the Glen Canyon group. Thank you.
So, so we can say that.
Why don't you finish, Ken? What were you going to say?
Well, basically I have a plus sign sitting right on top of the footer. I don't know how to get any closer than that. Um, but anyway, the whole thing is to see the gradational thing as you're going down through it. And so when you see that there is an overlap there, then you go back on to figure ten. Okay? And see on figure ten, there's an overlap of one and maybe plus minus error. I mean, these are, these are relatively your paint to blue. So when we're looking for error between the two, but you can see that right in the middle, uh, in March twenty sixteen, um, we have a new meeting, okay? And so basically, basically we're, we're making, and that's probably the plus line I'm looking on this graph here. But the important thing, and this is seasonal, which is kind of interesting. So this is seasonal for, or whatever. But the important thing is to see where these are plotted spatially. They need to be put down spatially. Look at it, okay? And then turn around and say, all right, what is the trend as we're coming down through Mill Creek? And as soon as we hit our aquifer, where do those blue dots begin? You know, are some up higher, some down lower, where are they? And so the other point being that anything that comes over from the top of the Morrison that drops down in there, anything that comes in that way is going to have a high altitude signature. Anything that comes in on the side is going to have a high altitude signature. Anything that's coming into the groundwater, which nobody has sampled underneath Mill Creek up at that point, would have a high altitude signature. So you could lay out a really good sampling program if you want to try and test out whether this is true or not. We just didn't have the budget or the money to do that.
So, uh, for those of us neophytes here, uh, I'm trying to understand exactly what Arnie's objection is in layman's terms compared to your assertions.
The chemistry doesn't match. The water in the Glen Canyon group wells and springs that are sup- that are supplying Moab City's water is different from the water in Mill Creek. And therefore, the water in Mill Creek is not recharging the Glen Canyon aquifer below seven thousand feet.
Okay.
But we've seen from, but we've already seen from Blanchard that it is recharging it, all right?
No, we have not. We don't know where
Okay.
Go ahead, Ken, finish what you were saying. Sorry.
The whole Blanchard study, the whole Blanchard study, the principle of that study was not to try and do what we're doing with it today. That is the old style way of trying to prove that groundwater discharges into surface water and that surface water can recharge groundwater. That's what Blanchard was trying to show. And the only way you can show that with some sort of definition is base flow. And that's why they do it in October or November. Because they have to have, frankly, they have to have, the convulsions have to drop. They can't have the water frozen. They can't have any events nearby or runoff or anything like that. They're trying to have the most neutral hydrologic system they can. And the whole purpose of this study was solely to show whether groundwater recharge or discharge into Mill Creek. And so on that particular date or those specific dates, he had gaining reaches and he had losing reaches. Now, why they were there, whether it's from a lateral flow or whether it's up and down from the vertical flow crack that we have, or both, we can both. Um, basically, we can't answer that because we don't know the depths of the crack. The crack could be two hundred feet, it could be five hundred feet. But there is a crack there and it's alive because the structure is active today.
And sure.
We'd love to put a paper out on this. But anyway, the, we don't have time yet for money, but we'd love to do that and get it peer reviewed.
Sure.
Uh, that would be great. Anyway, um, as we come down through that, he had several reaches that were gaining and several reaches that were losing. and several reaches that were losing. And so his study showed as best as we could on those dates, where that aquifer was a gaining aquifer or a losing aquifer, or a gaining stream or a losing stream. That was the sole purpose of his study. It wasn't to try and come up with duration. It wasn't to try and come up with the whole yearly volume that comes through that. The whole point is basically, if we have this spring and we did the same study that Blanchard did, we would see no losing stretches. It wouldn't show up. We got so much water coming through there. That would look totally neutral. And basically, the flow would just be in an increased queue all the way through because that's what a rainfall does, and that's also what seasonal snowpack does. It gives you a high flow, that is steady, and so it covers up any groundwater effects. However, what it also covers up is how much water, and that has a head on it, and that head is probably higher than the head of the aquifer. So when you have those high flows, you're actually recharging a whole lot of groundwater into that system. And so that show up yearly?
Wow.
Yeah, good question, because all we have is base flow. We have a low side. We don't have a high side. So we don't know what those events are really doing for focus, we call it focus recharge or blind recharge. And if they were to model it, that would be blind, that would be a recharge. They would probably put a river mode in there. The trouble is, you have sand and some gravel, but sand pretty much on sandstone. And so that's how they would have to model that thing. We have no data to say how much water is coming in in the spring and towards summer.
We've heard, we've heard a lot that there's no data, so go.
So, um, we all understand that groundwater and surface water are connected, and there is recharge and discharge, two streams from groundwater. Blanchard's study, though, obviously says, yes, it's recharging groundwater, but it does not justify recharging the Glen Canyon group. And your premise there that it is because of Blanchard's study just isn't justifiable. I don't see the point there, Ken. And I actually, and want to be done with this conversation, Cara. I've asked for a peer review of this document before it's accepted by the city as a final, because I disagree completely with the conceptual model, and I would like that to go forward to the city.
And what I would like to say on the topic, and not to shut this completely down yet, but what, I'm just going to be really blunt on this one, but basically, I'm, what I'm seeing is two differing opinions and being told, well, just trust us and we need more data. And that's where I think Arnie is correct, that we do need to have some kind of peer review of this to, that has, has minds that are more trained in hydrology and hydrogeology to actually evaluate this, because this is not what this board is.
So, so no one's, no one's saying we're not going to peer review this. Chuck made it clear that we wanted to go, have this discussion previous.
I understand that, but we're also now, we're basically in the room of doom, going around in circles. And I don't see, all I see right now is heightening agitation and irritation, which is not getting us to a better place of moving forward with this.
It's clear, I think, that Arnie has an objection. And, uh, I think everybody supports the idea of peer review. So I, my, I, I was not trying to continue this.
Well, that's what happened, because when you say to Ken, you want to understand it in simple terms, and we get twenty-minute lecture on how all of these things interact, that's great. But doing this over the phone does not work for me. That's not how my brain can process this information. And what I'm hearing right now are two different people saying, I'm right, no, I'm right. That's what I'm hearing, sitting back here right now. So I don't think that this is actually being productive for us at this moment.
I just wanted to clarify what the difference was between Arnie's assertion and Ken's assertion. That's, that was the sole purpose of my coming up here and asking.
Okay, I get that. Do you have that, or do we need to talk more about this to?
Still not exactly sure.
What I think I'm hearing being said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Arnie, and I'm sorry, Ken, I can't see you, so I can't get eye contact with you at this point. But what I'm seeing is, from what Ken is saying, he says that the graph that's not in front of us right now, but the one that has the crosses over the circles, that's the Glen Canyon groups being the circles and Mill Creek being the crosses, that that proves that they're mixing. And what Arnie is saying is that does not prove that they are mixing. That's what I think I'm hearing. Am I anywhere in the right ballpark there?
Yeah, that's what's going on.
So basically, we have a difference of opinion.
Yes.
And sitting here and arguing, and so that's what, so does that help clarify where we're at and where the?
Well, I, from what, from what I gather, from what Ken's model shows and what we've heard from him previously, is that the water coming out of the city's wells and springs comes through a fracture zone from Mill Creek. And it's therefore basically Mill Creek water.
And.
Now that, now, Arnie, is that what you disagree with, Arnie?
I disagree with his conceptual model, which is on the screen right now, page two of my PowerPoint presentation. His conceptual model has the water coming from, in the Glen Canyon aquifer, from the entire area below seven thousand feet. I agree with the USGS's conceptual model, where the Glen Canyon aquifer is coming down a different channel, or if you will, a pipe. I don't like to use that term because that is not what it is, but let's just call it that. From the high altitudes of the La Salle's, what Ken has modeled is a shallow Glen Canyon aquifer which feeds Mill Creek.
Okay.
And that does not feed the wells.
And that does not feed the wells. They are separate systems.
Looking at this picture then, uh, that blue, uh, stream in the middle is what you, is what you are saying feeds the wells and streams as opposed to what Ken says.
I agree with the USGS's conceptual model at this point in time.
Now, I understand, that's, that, that, I understand the difference now.
Okay.
That's, that's clear. Thank you.
All right. So I'm at a little bit of a loss as to where to go next with this meeting.
We had already, I guess, at this point in time, there said there was going to be a peer review of it. It just hasn't been done yet. I don't think we need to make a motion on that.
No, no, we don't. Um, but I mean, in terms of ending the meeting without everyone leaving with little flames coming out of their head.
Well, as long as, if the document gets peer reviewed, the UGS or whoever it peer reviews it, says Ken Cole's model is correct, the USGS model is incorrect, you know what? I'll take them both out to lunch.
We have witnesses to that.
You do.
Can I just say one minute's worth of stuff here? Okay. Right. I'm the least experienced knowledgeable person in the room, and I readily admit that. But it seems to me like clearly we have two ideas and we have a testable hypothesis. Either the water runs in Glen Canyon aquifer from Mill Creek somewhere around the golf course, or it doesn't. If we only had, I was talking to Chuck about this before the meeting. All it would take would be thirty-two thousand dollars for us to put a USGS stream flow gauge right before the North Fork and Mill Creek meet. Because Dana Van Horn sees to it that about three cubic feet per second flow out of MC eight every day. And if you look on the USGS thing where they have all that data every fifteen minutes, year after year after year, now, there are little spikes, but that's very constant data. And I was talking to Chuck. If you look at the data that I got from Arnie's wells and from somewhere else, it's not much. And I think from what's in the Blanchard's original report, the loss from what happens below the Shealy Tunnel and what happens below the Confluence is about, it's less than a thousand acre feet. We take three thousand eight a year, three thousand acre feet out a year. So that's a factor of three. I think we have two really smart bunches of people interpreting the same data in two different ways. And there's no way to do it without spending the money and getting some data. Now, you may want to do test wells or something else, but it seems to me we have arrived at the point where we have a testable hypothesis and there's nothing to do but see if we can get the money to do the test.
So I've had those flow, stream gauges in for four or five years now. And you saw the tabular data that's collected every fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we really need a USGS gauge there if I've already got five zero for the data.
Oh.
And by the way, you're correct. It's a little less than the CFS that's lost, and it kind of gains and loses, loses more in the steel bender section than it does in the next section down. It actually sometimes gains in the next section down. But the point with that, which you're making, is that that amount of water does not add up to three thousand six hundred cubic acre feet per year.
Right.
And it's way below whatever could actually recharge the Glen Canyon group with the sustainable rate that we're pumping and taking that water out.
So you're, so you're saying we already have the data?
We already have the data. We have this.
It's a matter of whether or not it is believed to be accurate enough. That's what it comes down to.
It, it aligns with all the USGS's, um, flow measurements also.
So I have one more question.
Yeah.
It seems like Ken and Paul have put together a, you know, uh, conceptual idea that includes these fracture zones and, you know, more, kind of more in-depth analysis of the geology that the USGS did. So I might, I guess I just want to ask Arnie, uh, based on this diagram, figure eleven on the screen, what, what, do they have any explanation as to why there's a, a middle path there, that blue path that feeds the springs? And do they have a hydrogeological explanation for why the water goes in that path as opposed to the other?
They did not. They weren't tasked with that.
Okay. Thank you.
So they didn't elucidate one.
Right. No, but they probably had some reason, so we just don't know. So, thank you.
Okay.
So with your permission, Cara, I'd like to vote if we're, let these guys go if they haven't already hung up. A few minutes longer than we can, if you're in as well. I've got some action items I know I want to pursue. Getting familiar with this document, going back through the USGS report a lot, and I'm turning it off. We can do all that offline, maybe we can let these guys go.
Does, are there any other questions for Ken or Paul, or things that need to be said? Are you guys still there?
Uh, yes, yeah, we have a quick question here. We were at the GSA meeting, of course, and we didn't see the Gardiner paper. It says recharge is calculated wherever, and discharge is calculated wherever. Just throwing out numbers like that makes no sense. It really depends spatially where they are and what's going on. So I would love to see where that is, because we've only done half of the big system. The other half is Pat Creek, of course. And to really make, to really make sense of, I think, the most significant number that came out of their study, which is the discharge of the Colorado River, I think that's a good number. Um, and we're not there yet, we have to go through that part of the system. We're just, we're just where the Glen Canyon system, the, the one part of the Glen Canyon system. The confusion is, there's, it's several parts to it. There is some Glen Canyon system underneath, obviously, the Spanish Valley, and it has a different gain, because aside from the fractures on the side, the main Glen Canyon group is that fracture that collapsed down there. And so they're not getting a whole lot of water out. They're basically just moving the gravel on top. But that is a Glen Canyon system. And however, it has a Pat Creek signature because the water from the Pat Creek is going down into it at that point. And so therefore, they're not getting any advantage of clean water, so to speak. There, there is, it's all connected. Um, and so we have to watch out for the confusion between what we're calling Glen Canyon water and what we're calling the Glen Canyon potcooper. Paul has another point, which is, when we deal with fractures, uh, not in the main fractures on the Mill Creek, but even there, but if we deal with the other fractures that are up on the upland, they will close at that. They're not just going to stay open forever and go down to, you know, pinbuck two. Most of them close within maybe, what, two, three hundred feet max. Uh, and then they're not going to be that effective. They're only going to be most effective right on the middle or the edge of the structure, like we see when we go through the sand last. And I know, Arnie, you were with us, we went there and looked at those. Those are pretty deep and open fractures right there. But even there, it'd be interesting to see if more than two or three hundred feet down, they start shutting down, because that's what nature does. Um, so, uh, fractures are very tricky things. They're very difficult to quantify, and they're very difficult to get an amount of water in. We're not, we're not kidding ourselves here. But what is important is the fractures are adding to your venue, not only how the flow path works. And by the way, let me add one other thing. The importance of Blanchard's study, and this is important to us, is it tells us where water comes into the stream from the side and where water might lead the stream to the side. And so that's the other variety in the study, because that's what gave us the clue where the reaches of stream were, where the city's water are going to be affected, which is down nearby where that spring fork comes in. That's where it's quite a moving stream at that point, and that's very important to note because that's where the stream is recharging that fracture zone heading out toward the city's wells and things like that. So everything Blanchard did, we like. I mean, it's got something about the system.
I know. This is really hard to do with the phone.
Recharge in the spring versus clear, but what it does tell us is stretches the stream that we want to look to protect, because those will be.
Okay. We got it. Sorry, you're, I think you're kind of repeating yourself a little bit on some things you already said before. So I think we need to wrap this up, because we have a few things we need to. So sorry for interrupting, but I, since I can't see you, I can't more politely interrupt. Um, so I think unless there's other things the board wants to ask you to clarify, I think we should just wind up the phone call part of this meeting so we can have a quick discussion amongst ourselves, if that's okay.
So we didn't, that wasn't fair, we should try again.
Hey, Ken, we're going to hang up on the phone call now. I've got some other things to do, okay?
Okay, definitely.
Thank you, guys, very much. We'll be in touch.
Appreciate it.
Bye-bye. It's all you.
So for future, I would like to have conversations like this with everyone in the room. I, I find it very difficult to handle long, extended discussions.
And here's the, here's the thing. I, we inherited a project budget that only has so much money for those guys to travel.
I get it.
So we're going to have to look at putting some travel money in. Because they, you know, they, they come at certain points in the project.
Right.
Or they've always tried to, but I agree with you.
I understand, but it just.
Phone calls are more expensive.
Well, and it just leads to more confusion than it does to clarification, in my opinion. There's some pieces that are now clear and there are others that are now not, so.
Yeah.
It's fine. So for future, let's try not to do it this way again. But, okay, so you're leaving now. Do we need Chuck for anything? Any questions for Chuck?
Chuck, Chuck, Mark.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
More money in the budget, Chuck.
Yeah, more, more money.
More money in the budget, there, that's the point.
Okay. So, and I've, my four o'clock thing, I have, I can be late to now. I've let them know.
So let's move quickly.
Let's move through the rest of whatever we need to move through.
I think Mike was the only one with agenda items.
Well, there are no more agenda items, so what's, we can't, we can't act on anything today. But we can put things on, because we have a meeting next week, so we can put things on to that agenda. So is that, so go ahead.
Yeah, I will not be here next week.
I won't be here next week either.
Okay. Well, say what you got to say, and if we need to put it on the following times agenda, or is this a thing?
We're going to peer review.
That, we don't need to motion on that.
Oh, I know that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think we need that.
That was a statement.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Not motion.
What do you got, Mike?
I just got one quick question for Arnie.
Yep.
Sixty seconds. All right. You remember when you and I.
Good timing.
What are you looking at?
Looking at, on your side. Uh, remember, we're looking at Blanchard's data and gaining, losing streams. When it comes down to the golf course, remember, I looked at the numbers, you looked at the numbers, and I remarked to you, gee, this can't be right. These are base flow conditions. All right? That's the critical thing. And I said, there's not anywhere near enough water losing out of this stream to charge the city's wells, okay? And it got left there, but I realize now, one thing that Ken said that made it clear is that when streams start carrying snowmelt and rain and stuff like that, they get higher, the discharge, now the streams start to lose a lot more water that flowed down. So in other words, it's still possible that with, the spring snowmelt in particular, it's what's charging the fractured zone, what Ken calls the fractured zone, and it charges everywhere. Because I didn't, I didn't, this state was the snowmelt part of, from the base flow part.
The seasonality.
So I hear what you're saying, Mike. However, the water doesn't match. And if it is recharging.
From the signature point.
The signature point of view.
That's important.
So it is recharging, and there is probably more of a head on it. And if we were to do some of that without, if we could actually take out a battle transpiration, we probably would see, I would agree, that we would see. we probably would see, I would agree, that we would see more recharge when we have more water in the streams, just because there is a little pressure, probably. I can't say that for sure. But what I would say, if you look at the picture up here, where'd my pointer go? That's going into the shallow GCGA. It's not going into the Glen deeper GCGA where the city is getting their wells, well water from.
So, what, so what Arnie's saying is that runoff is primarily going in here, which is going into the streams and then potentially going in, whereas where the wells are is a different water signature completely.
Completely, yeah. And I, I agree with you, Mike, that, that although, and you're a little off, if we actually did the calculations, it's about a half a CFS or two-thirds of a CFS between, um, the golf course, okay, or Spring Canyon. Can we call it Spring Canyon? Cause that's what it is.
This is what I wanted to think. So, here's what I, okay. So, what you guys got, I, so I'm just now looking, focusing on this little blue line and I realize it's not Mill Creek.
No, that is not Mill Creek. That is not.
So, this is obviously the first.
No, it's not going down Spanish Valley. I'm sorry.
So, this, this conceptual model, where it's saying D two up there, is that what it is up there? E R one?
R one.
Okay, in, in the paper that you will see, and I was unfortunate that my next slide here does, does not have that picture on it. When that paper comes out, that R one that you see will be moved to the left.
To the left?
Yes, to the left, over towards Mill Creek. And I could not get Kip Solomon to give me that slide to save my soul.
What is this supposed to represent?
Well, it's, it's just, right now, it's just saying that it's coming from the mountains.
Yeah, it's conceptually saying that this water here is coming up here. It's not saying that there's-
So, you're saying the fractures are only going all the way up.
Well-
You know that the fractures on Long East and Magic Valley here, but I thought it ended here. Now, he's got it growing all the way up here.
And I got to the point where I was actually pulling up the, um, the maps that show the fracture zones and there's numerous fractures up there, all the way up. But how deep they are, how they work is another story. And I, I started looking at that and I go, you know what? This isn't my job. This is not my job, okay? I've made my point and let's have some, a professional peer review it and we'll move on from there, okay?
So, so manager, I'm gonna read this document, go back and reread the report. Brush, I've been using the web, you know, I'm gonna read all the isotopes, little deltas, this and that, oxygen and all that. So, I'll get a little smarter about that. That's, that's what's on my mind.
This, this one is not avail, this report is not available yet, correct?
That report is not available. That was given to us at Chris Wilkowski at the MOP meeting. And he said all of that information was basically garnered from the USGS report. I, I will mention one other thing here, Mike, that you, as we brought up the Chapman well. The Chapman well has the same, if I, it's well number eleven on the, I believe it's well number eleven on the US, on the USGS, which is, I think it's page ten where they have the actual, well, somewhere in there, they have the actual deuterium and oxygen eighteen isotopes and it is Glen Canyon water.
Is it?
Yes.
But that's right on that blue line or well?
Yeah. No, that's on, I mean, the Chapman well is in this-
It's Glen Canyon water?
That's Glen Canyon group water. That's what I was saying. I looked it up here while we were talking. It's, it's a hundred-
Well, what about the water in Ken's lake?
Though, that's water coming from the Shealy diversion and it has a different, different signature, okay? It's also been exposed to air.
And then torpedo is Ken's assertion that Chapman basis.
Yes, it does, which is why I asked him whether he looked at that and that answer, question was never answered.
Correct.
We are really, I mean, we're really confused.
I'm not confused.
Not confused. We're not confused, but the problem, what I saw and what just happened here today is that a whole lot of words were used to explain that, yes, this is a complicated system, which I get. But when it comes down to there's isotopic signatures of these different waters, we don't need to talk about the forty-five different fractures that go down this deep, that deeper, the other depth. It's, if, if this water's not there, it's not there.
Would-
It's that simple.
I wanna digress for a second. You know what isotopes can tell you? They can tell you where water doesn't come from.
Right.
They can't actually tell you where water comes from. So, we can say with the isotopes, it doesn't come from Mill Creek, but we can't actually say it comes from right here. That's why isotopes do that.
Fair enough.
Okay?
But, but I, I mean, and I, I think, and I, I don't see the value of going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth between two different opinions, which is what we were doing. And I would rather see peer review.
They're moved to a drink. Anything else, Mike?
I see.
Okay. Was that, was that because, uh-
Is this your?
You were playing space? No, that is the city's.
Oh, okay.
That was Chuck's, I think. Chuck had it on his.
I think it was. We think it's Chuck's. Give him the joy.
You know, I, I cannot get past, they're not, they don't equivocate one hair. They say it's not the same water. They say it four times and they have the data.
And they say, trust me. They don't give-
That's what I'm saying.
Off the, off the record, I'd like to apologize.
We can argue all day long to work on it.
Hang on, hang on. I've got two things happening at once here and she's turning-